The City of Los Angeles Department of Recreation and Parks noticed that there was a need to reconnect with our patrons when they were not able to visit our parks. So we created a virtual recreation program called Rec Connect L.A.
Rec Connect L.A. started because when we were given orders by our mayor to stay at home, our parks were shut down, our facilities were shut down, they were closed. So our patrons were not able to come to our centers and enjoy relaxation and fitness and socialize. So we need to reconnect with our population, with the City of Los Angeles. And how better way than to create videos of fitness activities from our recreation professionals?
Social media is extremely important because more people are online these days due to COVID. So it's a great opportunity to bring the parks to them.
They're on demand and absolutely free.
Another really interesting point that we have coming up are virtual tours.
There'll be links to, let's say, the city library, or the Jean A. Tre Museum, or the zoo.
Our Rec Connect L.A. videos and our whole program is available online at www.laparks.org/virtualrecreation.
People can find us under Rec Connect L.A., all one word. We are on Instagram, Facebook, TikTok, and Twitter.
Our goal is to continue this program forever. It's going to become a core program of the City of Los Angeles Department of Recreation and Parks.
Even as Los Angeles slowly opens up for business and safer-at-home orders begin to ease, the issue of food insecurity looms more widespread than ever. Fortunately, organizations like Think Watts and Aqua Equity are on the ground and in the neighborhood, ready to meet the need.
Today, Think Watts and Top Dog Entertainment are having a big donation for all the housing communities within Watts. We are partnering with them by donating cases of our water to any families in the housing projects.
I was already working with Beyond Meat to do burgers for students inside LAUSD. I reached out to them and said, "Hey, I want to give products to my entire neighborhood." And now we're distributing boxes to every housing project in Watts with at least four or more people.
Today's 792 families, and this is our biggest donation yet.
As far as you asked me why, you know, coming out here to do this, these communities need help all the time, with or without the coronavirus.
We've done it with no funding, no real backing behind it, only just collaborating partners coming together. I want to do this moving forward.
The Department of Disabilities was out in full force, making sure residents with mobility challenges have access to hot meals. Just get a load of this operation.
Today, we are distributing 3,000 meals to Angelinos with disabilities. Sometimes they are undergoing food insecurity, and we make sure that instead of exposing them to COVID-19 by going out to the supermarket, that we just bring a hot lunch meal to them at their doorstep. Today's operation includes many volunteers from the Mayor's Office Volunteer Engagement Team. We have DSW workers from the LA Zoo, and we have DoD personnel on staff as well. Our responsibility here is to make sure that folks throughout LA City and including the county at times get a hot meal, and that's where we distribute the meals into these access vans, who will then go ahead and deliver to the families in need.
The Grab and Go program that the LAUSD offers is a fantastic opportunity for providing meals to students. But if you're a child who's dependent upon school transportation to get to and from a school site, and your parents don't have a way to transport you to and from school because of your disability, limitations in walking, wheelchair access, additional support, that means you're not likely to go to a Grab and Go site to pick up food. So this is the kind of program that helps fill that gap.
We are humbled to be here today. And throughout the weeks that we've been here with our volunteer team, to be able to get in here and assist them in their mission in getting those meals to those across the city.
My coworkers support me. They're cheering me on, and it's a good thing. Nothing but win-win-win for everybody.
Over in Playa del Rey, a small but focused group of dedicated volunteers has ramped up the work they started seven years ago. They are finding ways to feed over 20 families in need, and they call themselves Grassroots Neighbors.
We actually started a Feed the People program about seven years ago, where we started cooking warm, home-cooked meals to deliver to the homeless in Venice. And then in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, we've been able to launch in the last three weeks our mutual aid program to get food to families in need here on the West Side. Currently, we have about 26 households that we're serving, with about 92 people total in that. And that's only in the last three weeks. We're just growing and growing. Every day, we get more requests for help. It's presented challenges. We're building the airplane and learning to fly and trying to get it off the ground all at once. But we have had such wonderful support from the community, from Legato, from a mother's group here in Westchester in Playa del Rey. Don't underestimate the moms. They'll turn out en masse. We are all 100% volunteers.
Having a direct impact on your local community like this, you know, we're directly helping people who need it, is really important. And it sort of can bring up your spirits a lot at a time like this, when there's lots of people who need help, and you can get out there yourself and volunteer and make a difference to those people who need it.
June is National Pride Month, the time of the year when we give focus to the ongoing issues of gender identity and gender equality. One of the city's best-known figures in the transgender community is Karina Samala. She is an advocate to some, a mother figure to others, a teacher, and a trailblazer. Here's her story.
I am Karina Samala. I am the current chair of the City of Los Angeles Transgender Advisory Council, and I'm also the founding chair and still a member of the City of West Hollywood Transgender Advisory Board. Both boards give recommendations to the mayor, the city council, and all government entities within the city on any issues regarding the transgender community. I am known to be the mother of the Los Angeles transgender community because I respond to all the calls from my community siblings or daughters out there. Anybody that asks for help, I go and help them. A lot of our older trans women already going through that age needs, you know, healthcare and housing. And I'm very appreciative and very lucky that we live in a city such as Los Angeles and Hollywood. We have government officials who are there, really helping our community, and that I'm truly grateful. Because right now, I go to a lot of our city council members and also the mayors that are there when I come and ask for help. They're there to help. I support Black Lives Matter. To me, all lives matter. I've worked with law enforcement, I sit on the advisory board, and the Shell Department, and LAPD, doing policies that we were created for interaction with the transgender community. All the policies are being used right now to help our community. Has gone through the work that our group had done during the AIDS epidemic and stuff like that. We were really out there with nothing. A lot of people really looked down upon us and say, "Hey, we did this to ourselves," you know, and they didn't even care about us. And so now we're having the coronavirus. Now they're targeting Asian-American families and Asian-American people, especially the Asian transgender community that, you know, we brought in to Corona partners. I see a really bright future. Being there for each other, moving forward, united, we stand forward, together, we rise. Happy Pride, Los Angeles, being this is the 50th anniversary of L.A. Pride. We say, "Be proud and be free."
All Black Lives Matter. And I feel like today is the day that we're supposed to stand together and really show solidarity for what we believe in.
I can't live with myself if I don't do something to help my Black brothers and sisters, my Latino brothers and sisters, my Asian brothers and sisters, all my brothers and sisters. This has gone on for far too long, and I've seen it going on. I've done little bits in the past to protest and try to be a part of change, but it just hasn't been enough. And now, I'm going to do everything in my power to be there for them and to fight along with them. This is not my plight, but it is my fight.
I just want to be heard. I want us all to be heard, and I want us to be seen. And I want us to be seen that we're good people, and we're just out here just trying to survive as well just as everyone else. And we're all equal. We all bleed red. We do. You know what I mean? We're no different than anybody else.
What I'm trying to accomplish is unity with the community. Doesn't matter what race you are, doesn't matter where you're from. We're all in this fight together. We're one species, and that's human. And that's what I'm here for.
Compost collection resumes at the Atwater Farmers Market. It's the Day of the Ancestors Festival of Masks in Lamont Park. All this next on Virtual Things to Do.
Breathe, move, heal. Learn and experience Afro-Diasporic dance with Bear and Lightner. Each week includes an introduction to an Afro-Diasporic social dance. The workshop series will culminate in a virtual performance for the 10th Annual Day of the Ancestors, Festival of the Masks, at the Lamont Park Art Walk. All ages are unwelcome and invited to participate in this free series of public programs. For more information on this Zoom event, visit lacomms.org/festivalofmasks. Soundtrack for a Movement is a musical offering, a place to let go, and a call to cultivate our collective power. Each Saturday of Pride Month, they'll provide a soundtrack for this movement while amplifying Black and queer artists on their digital dance floor. Move, groove, dress up, dress down, perform and play in a virtual space that you'll co-create together. Bring your family, your pets, your costumes, whatever gets you in the party mood. This party's open to everyone all over the world. Check out Soundtrack for a Movement, June 27 at 5:00 p.m. For details, visit their listing on Eventbrite. Bring your food scraps to the Atwater Village Farmers Market. They'll be collected and composted locally at their regional compost hub located at the Audubon Center at Debs Park. There is no right container to store and bring your compost. You probably already have a great bin, jar, or bag at home. Use what you have. The Community Compost Collection is volunteer-powered and community-funded. If you enjoy composting with LA Compost, they ask for a donation of $1 to $5 per drop-off. Take advantage of the compost collection at the Atwater Farmers Market, Sunday, June 28. For information, visit la.compost.org. And that's a look at some virtual things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Saieda Pagan. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lecityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. This Week.
Okay, good morning and welcome to the LaSandra City Council. Today is Tuesday, June 23rd. I'm Nury Martinez, President of the City Council. Madam Clerk, can you please call the row?
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, present.
Bonin.
Bonin, present.
Buscaino.
Present.
Sidiel. Harris Dawson.
Here.
Weezer absent. Coetz.
Present.
Krikorian.
Here.
Lee.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
Olferro.
Present.
Price.
Present.
Rodriguez. Rue absent. Wesson.
Wesson, here.
Eleven.
City OI.
Oh.
City OI, present, I'm sorry.
Twelve members present and a quorum, Madam President.
Before we get started, Madam Clerk, members, given the recent events this morning with Mr. Weezer, I will be introducing a Rule 23 motion per Charter Section 211 before our meeting is adjourned today. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes of June 17, 2020.
Mr. Buscaino moves and Mr. Olferro seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Coetz moves and Mr. Sidiel seconds, next.
Madam President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Mr. Buscaino, will you please lead us in our flag salute, sir?
With great honor, Madam President, please rise. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Buscaino? Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and run through the agenda.
Madam President, with counsel like all items to go forth with today?
Without objection, that will be the order, next.
Madam President, there are several requests. First of all, the continuances. There is a request to continue Item 11 and 26 to August 4, 2020. Continue Item 32 to June 30, 2020. Continue Item 57 to June 24, 2020. And the Department requests to receive and file Items 1B, E, J and as much they are paid in full, reduce the lien to Item 1A to $2,091.12 and continue this item to August 12, 2020. And finally, to continue 1, C, D, F, G, H, I, K to August 12, 2020 and to hold Item 35 on the desk.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order, next.
Items 1 through 12 are items noticed for public hearing. Items 13 through 38 are items which public hearings have been held. For the record, the Transportation Committee reports for Items 18 and 26 have been posted and online under those council files. Items 39 through 50 are items which public hearings have not been held. Items 51 through 57 are closed session items waived through, waived from Budget and Finance. And 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Members, are there any specials or do you want to introduce any amendments to the items before us? Mr. Bloomingfield?
Great, thank you. I'd like to ask that we continue Items 8 and Item 9. And on Item 10, and all three are related to a project in my district, Item 10, that we veto and remand that back to the South Valley Planning Commission. And I can go into the details at the time.
I'll second that.
Okay, I got a second from Mr. Buscaino. So Items 8, 9, and 10, any others, Mr. Bloomingfield?
Well, 8 and 9 for continuance and 10 is for a veto and remand back to South Valley Planning Commission.
Yes, we got that. Any others? We need a date for the continuation, sir.
Well, the track maps, they generally follow the project, so it would be until the project comes back, if the project comes back.
Ms. Councilmember Bloomingfield, for clarification, would you like to continue the items to another date certain in council? Or do you mean to refer those items back to committee for, in this case, the Planning and Land Use Management Committee for further consideration, sir?
Okay, why don't we, for 8 and 9, since those are the ones I want to continue, the way to do that is to refer them back to committee then, so be it, let's refer those two back to committee. And for Number 10, I want to remand it back to South Valley Planning Commission.
Okay, so for Number 10, you made a motion, Councilmember Buscaino, second. And for 8 and 9, to refer back to Planning Land Use Management Committee for further consideration. We need a second to that.
Actually, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm getting a notice here. Why don't we instead just put a date of August 19 on the continuance?
So 8 and 9 should be continued in council to August 19, 2020, sir, okay.
Great, thank you.
Yes, Madam President, 8 and 9 is continued in council to August 19, 2020.
Is that it? Is that all for you, Mr. Bloomingfield?
That's it.
All right, Mr. Olferro?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to call 38 special for an elaboration before we vote to approve. Thank you.
Can you repeat the item again, sir?
That's Item 38.
Thank you. Do you have any others? Mr. Price?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'd like to call 31 special, please.
Okay, 31 special for Mr. Price. You just want to speak on this issue or are you introducing an amended motion?
No, just to like to say a few words.
Members, are there any others? Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and...
Madam President, was 35 called special?
Yes, I called it special. I'm sorry about that.
Thank you.
Thank you for reminding me. Mr. City Attorney, can you introduce, I'm sorry, can you mention the technical amendments to Item 35?
Yes, I'll read them into the record, Madam President. They're a bit long, so bear with me. So the motion is to delete Recommendation Number 4, to delete Recommendation 5A and replace it with the following language. Execute a Fourth Amendment to City Contract Number C-134129 with the Southern California Housing Rights Center to increase the compensation amount by $97,636.36 for a cumulative compensation not to exceed $108,476.536 for the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the City Attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add Recommendation Number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert, technical, or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,296.536. For the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form
Okay, good morning and welcome to the LaSandra City Council. Today is Tuesday, June 23rd. I'm Nuri Martinez, President of the City Council. Madam Clerk, can you please call the row?
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, present.
Bonin.
Bonin, present.
Buscaino.
Present.
Sidiel. Harris Dawson.
Here.
Weezer absent. Coetz.
Present.
Krikorian.
Here.
Lee.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Price.
Present.
Rodriguez. Rue absent. Wesson.
Wesson here.
Eleven.
City of I? City of present, I'm sorry.
Twelve members present and a quorum, Madam President.
Before we get started, Madam Clerk, members, given the recent events this morning with Mr. Weezer, I will be introducing a Rule 23 motion per Charter Section 211 before our meeting is adjourned today. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes of June 17th, 2020.
Mr. Buscaino moves and Mr. O'Farrell seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Coetz moves and Mr. Sidiel seconds, next.
Madam President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Mr. Buscaino, will you please lead us in our flag salute, sir?
With great honor, Madam President, please rise. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Buscaino? Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and run through the agenda.
Madam President, would counsel like all items to go forth with today?
Without objection, that will be the order, next.
Madam President, there are several requests. First of all, the continuances. There is a request to continue item 11 and 26 to August 4th, 2020. Continue item 32 to June 30th, 2020. Continue item 57 to June 24th, 2020. And the department requests to receive and file items 1B, E, J, and as much they are paid in full, reduce the lien to item 1A to $2,091.12 and continue this item to August 12th, 2020. And finally, to continue 1C, D, F, G, H, I, K to August 12th, 2020, and to hold item 35 on the desk.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order, next.
Items 1 through 12 are items noticed for public hearing. Items 13 through 38 are items which public hearings have been held. For the record, the Transportation Committee reports for items 18 and 26 have been posted and online through, under those council files. Items 39 through 50 are items which public hearings have not been held. Items 51 through 57 are closed session items waived through, waived from Budget and Finance, and 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Members, are there any specials or do you want to introduce any amendments to the items before us? Mr. Blumenfield?
Great, thank you. I'd like to ask that we continue item 8 and item 9, and on item 10, and all three are related to a project in my district, item 10, that we veto and remand that back to the South Valley Planning Commission. And I can go into the details at the time.
I'll second that.
Okay, I got a second from Mr. Buscaino. So items 8, 9, and 10, any others, Mr. Blumenfield?
Well, 8 and 9 for continuance and 10 is for a veto and remand back to South Valley Planning Commission.
Yes, we got that. Any others? We need a date for the continuation, sir.
Well, they're the track maps, they generally follow the project, so it would be until the project comes back, if the project comes back.
Ms., Councilmember Blumenfield, for clarification, would you like to continue the items to another date certain in council? Or do you mean to refer those items back to committee for, in this case, the Planning and Land Use Management Committee for further consideration, sir?
Okay, why don't we, for 8 and 9, since those are the ones I want to continue, the way to do that is to refer them back to committee then, so be it, let's refer those two back to committee. And for number 10, I want to remand it back to South Valley Planning Commission.
Okay, so for number 10, you made a motion, Councilmember Buscaino, second, and for 8 and 9 to refer back to Planning Plan, to Planning Land Use Management Committee for further consideration. We need a second.
Actually, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm getting a notice here, why don't we instead just put a date of August 19th on the continuance?
So 8 and 9 should be continued in council to August 19th, 2020, sir, okay.
Great, thank you.
Yes, Madam President, 8 and 9 is continued in council to August 19th, 2020.
Is that it, is that all for you, Mr. Blumenfield?
That's it.
All right, Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam President, I'd like to call 38 special for an elaboration before we vote to approve. Thank you.
Can you repeat the item again, sir?
That's item 38.
Thank you. Do you have any others? Mr. Price?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'd like to call 31 special, please.
Okay, 31 special for Mr. Price, you just want to speak on this issue or are you introducing an amended motion?
No, just like to say a few words.
Members, are there any others? Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and-
Madam President, was 35 called special?
Yes, I called it special, I'm sorry about that.
Thank you.
Thank you for reminding me. Mr. City Attorney, can you introduce, I'm sorry, can you mention the technical amendments to item 35?
Yes, I'll read them into the record, Madam President, they're a bit long, so bear with me. So the motion is to delete recommendation number 4, to delete recommendation 5A and replace it with the following language. Execute a fourth amendment to city contract number C-134129 with the Southern California Housing Rights Center to increase the compensation amount by $97,636.36 for a cumulative compensation not to exceed $108,476.536 for the administration of the ERAS program, subject to approval of the city attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the city attorney's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Add recommendation number 5F to read. First, find that the services to be performed by AnswerNet are for the performance of professional scientific expert technical or other special services of a temporary and casual character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. Second, execute a sole source contract with AnswerNet to intake calls for the ERAS program with a contract term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, and a compensation amount not to exceed $673,294 for a one-year term subject to approval of the city attorney as to form and legality, compliance with the city's contracting requirements, and funding availability. Next, delete recommendation 6B and replace with the following. Establish new accounts and appropriate funds within the COVID-19 Federal Relief Fund, number 63M, as follows. Account to be determined, account name, Citywide ERAS Grant, amount $94,875.36. Account 43T143, Housing and Community Investment Department, $128,081. Account 43T299, reimbursement of federal fund cost, $82,089. Account to be determined, ERAS Family Source Center contracts, $1 million. Account to be determined, ERAS Technical Contracts, $470,500. Account to be determined, ERAS Call Center, $673,294, and outreach, $10,000, for a total of $683,294. Account to be determined, ERAS Program Administration Contract Grant, $2,761. The total of those amounts is $100 million. Add recommendation number 7 to read. Amend the program framework to require that landlords who accept the rental assistance be required not to evict tenants for six months following the lifting of the emergency declaration. That's it, Madam President.
Can I get a second? Mr. O'Farrell, thank you. Can I just go ahead and, Madam Clerk, can you please read in our calling information for public comment?
Yes, Madam President. As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 160-535-8466, and then press the pound key. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once submitted in the meeting, press star 9 to request to speak. Let me repeat, call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 160-535-8466, and then press the pound key. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID number. Once submitted into the meeting, press star 9 to request to speak.
Madam President, would you like me to read in the speaking rules?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So to members of the public calling in, when it is your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you would like to speak on. You have one minute per item to speak, up to three minutes total, and if you wish, one minute for general public comment. Please speak on the items first before providing general public comment. We will tell you when your time is up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can, and if you're not speaking on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you're speaking on an agenda item, you will get one brief warning from me or the President. If you do not immediately get clearly on topic or against or off-topic, the President will cut you off and you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time and we will move on to the next speaker. It will take 45 minutes total of public comment. Finally, for members of the public calling in to speak, as soon as someone addresses you, you are live in the council meeting. If you're also listening to council on your computer, Channel 35, or other device, please turn down the volume on those devices immediately. There's a time delay between the live meeting and the broadcast on those devices, and it will cause confusion if you continue to listen on those devices. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, let's go ahead and begin and take the first speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Are you speaking to me?
Yes, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, I'd like to speak on item 1 through 7, or I'm sorry, yeah, 1 through, 1 through, 1 through 12, 11, 41, 43, 46, 49, and general public comment.
Okay, you have three minutes for all your items and one minute for general public comment, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Good morning. Item number 1, these nuisance abatements, I've stated many times before, I'm against these liens being placed on people's properties, especially now. They're sometimes used as a tool for the actual theft of people's property, that's not what we need now in this economic environment. These should be used very, very under extreme circumstances, and that's not, and that's not happening, I know it from that personally, some people that the city's placing liens on. Item number 4, and especially in CD8 where Marquise Dawson regularly tries to steal property. Item number 4, West Adams Business Improvement, this item is about, this area is South Los Angeles, we don't like our area being renamed, this is an area of hyper gentrification, not that current price cares. These, what people need to know is these people, Wesson, Price, Dawson, they are not representatives of the black community. They represent themselves and the white supremacist power structure. That's what they are there for. This area is a hyper gentrification, and even naming it West Adam is racist. We don't need our areas renamed. 11, item number 11, application for alcoholic beverage, that's ridiculous, and this time you're handing out liquor licenses, Wesson's done this three or four times, as corrupt as he is. This is not the time to be handing out liquor licenses, you guys have, you people have nothing better to do, my goodness. That's why we have an increase of 13% in homelessness, you people are lining your pockets with the city's money, you are the looters. Do your jobs, you're self-serving. Number 41, removing properties from REIT, that's a very good thing. 43, these fire station extension in CD11, where in CD8, of course, sleazy Marquise Dawson is trying to evict the Afeba Center, we've got something for you coming up, Dawson, we've got something really good. This is the inequity that the black community faces, we don't have representation. He wants to raise a 120-foot monument to a racist white man on the Afeba Center property. In this time, this is insane.
Thank you, would you please go on to your general public comment? Thanks.
Yes, thank you. As I mentioned, the homelessness increased by 13%, and that's a very, very low figure, 66,000 people. Why? HHH funds have been looted by this city council, building these units, $60,000 per unit public, not per building, per unit, $1.2 billion wasted. Why? So the LA City Council, self-serving corrupt looters can line their pockets with campaign contributions from the developers, care nothing about the homeless. In an area of 15% unemployment before COVID-19, you people gave Dawson a million, almost a million dollars in two luxury office moves, one to take over the unemployment office. This is the representation we have.
Thank you, sir.
These people do-
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Eli Henry, and I'm a resident of District 13, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, what items do you want to speak on?
I'd just like to give public comment.
Okay, you have one minute, go ahead.
Right. Regarding last week's presentation by the People's City Council off of the People's Budget, and the response to propose, you know, an initiative to looking to, an investigation into the potential idea of eventually moving to emergency, non-police responders, it's as the People's City Council said, you know, if it is what it is, if it is what it says to be, you know, it's a good thing. But, you know, I know that the budget has to be passed for July post, and that's in just over a week. So, the thing is, these reports take a very long time, and I'm concerned that this is just going to be a way to push this off and push this off and push this off, so that maybe down the line, you know, we'll have a couple social workers. It's not acceptable, we need to move on this fast, we have to defund the police now. Not tomorrow, not next week, not next year, but for this upcoming fiscal year, it needs to happen now. Thank you.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Madeline Powker, I'd like to give public comment.
You have one minute, go ahead.
I'd like to echo the previous commenter, we need to defund the police in this upcoming fiscal year budget. The mayor's proposed cuts are still not enough, that's been made clear to you many times by the People's Budget LA Coalition, including Black Lives Matter. You know, more than 20,000 of your constituents took this survey, they feel that only about 6% of the budget needs to go toward the police, and that the city should be prioritizing housing, childcare, healthy food, clean air and water, pandemic recovery, the built environment, and reimagined public safety. You need to keep engaging with Black Lives Matter LA and its partners, and adopt a People's Budget as soon as possible. Thank you, I yield my time.
Okay, next speaker. Good morning.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Samantha Spacassi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, what items do you want to speak on?
Sorry, I'd like to speak general public comment.
You have one minute, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo everyone else's sentiments that you guys need to adopt a People's Budget and support Black Lives Matter LA. I'm really disappointed to see that primarily, right now, it just feels like lip service. People have been asking for weeks, I've been on every single one of these calls, everyone is saying, pass the People's Budget, defund the LAPD, listen to your constituents, and remember, you are, you support, you represent us, and right now, it feels like you're not doing any of that, it feels like you're being really self-serving, and you don't actually care about the communities. Adopt a People's Budget, defund the LAPD today. I yield my time.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Am I on?
Yes, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
It's a confusing process. Hey, my name is Josh, and I'd like to speak on item 30, and also issue a short kind of general comment.
Did you say item 30?
Yeah, I said item 30.
Okay, you, go ahead, you have one minute for item 30 and one minute for general public comment.
Cool. Yeah, I'm basically in support of passing item 30 immediately, which would kind of entail fully funding the eviction defense program, and would also, in fact, bolster up kind of tenant outreach and education, and targeted rental assistance, and legal defense. And I think even before this crisis, we were dealing with kind of a collection of other housing crises, one displacement, a lack of comprehensive, you know, tenant protections, and a lack of affordable housing. And I think we're in, we're already in some deep, very, kind of, social trials beforehand, and that's kind of referenced by the push for a codified right to counsel that we've been working on in the LA Right to Counsel Coalition. And yeah, I think that we need to kind of aggressively expand tenant protection because, you know, we are prone to seeing a flood of evictions, and many vulnerable, like, individuals experiencing houselessness as a result, and that would furthermore increase kind of infections and-
Thank you.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Before we take the next, hold on for just a second, before we take the next speaker, Mr. Coetz, did you want to say something? You have your virtual hand up.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, I missed an item, but I wanted to call item 12 special on behalf of Councilmember Ruth.
Okay, thank you, item 12 special. Sorry about that, Speaker, please repeat your name and what items would you like to speak on?
Yeah, hi, my name is Sarah Port, I'm an LA voter, and I would like to speak on items 2, 46, and also general public comment.
Okay, you have two minutes for your items and one minute for your general public comment, go ahead.
Oh, great, so for number 2, I'll keep it really quick, but the cost of ambulances is already prohibitively expensive, so I think that voting to increase the cost of ambulances would be crazy, especially during a pandemic, so please consider not approving increasing the cost of ambulances during a world health crisis, that would be pretty cool. On number 46, it looks like you are considering spending a very small amount of money to light up City Hall for George Floyd, that seems like a ridiculously, a ridiculously small gesture, considering that the police department has killed over 600 people murdered by, up the hands of the police in the last several years, and so far, I've been on all of these calls, and it doesn't seem to me that the City Council or the LA Police Department have made any significant moves to even arrest most of those officers, remove them from their positions, or make any meaningful motions to defund the police or abolish the police. So, it's a nice gesture, but I don't think it really means anything, guys. Onto my general public comment, I've heard a lot of people speaking in the past couple of days, in the last week, about making sure that we train our police officers in handling mental health crises. I was just in the police commissioner's office, where they were really proud of their 40-hour program to teach police officers how to handle mental health crises. We don't want the police handling mental health crises, period. They're not experts in mental health, even if they've spent one work week learning how to deal with it. We want police out of those situations because they make it dangerous. We want you to defund the police and adopt the People's Budget. I yield my time, thank you.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, good morning, my name is Catherine Blasenicer, I'd like to speak on items 30 and general public comment.
You have one minute for each.
Thank you. I'm an intern, Liz Page, and I support passing item 30 immediately. The City Council should fully fund the eviction defense program, including tenant outreach, education, targeted rental assistance, and legal defense. Every tenant who faces the threat of an eviction should have the right to an attorney. Additionally, many evictions can be prevented when tenants know their rights and how to exercise them. This is one of the services that we should be implementing and supporting, rather than increased policing that damages communities. In order to save the economy, LA is reopening far too early, and more people will die as a direct result of increased exposure to COVID. Fully fund the eviction defense program to keep people healthy and in their homes. This is more critical than ever before amidst COVID-19, where home means safety from infection. Dr. Blasen, the UCLA law professor, estimates that approximately 365,000 evictions are going to be filed after the judicial console order is lifted, and this could impact the lives of 558,000 children. Major investment in tenant outreach, education, and legal representation will be critical to protecting residents from eviction and possible houselessness. This is one of the basic and fundamental actions the City Council can take right now to preserve human life.
Thank you.
I also support defunding the police.
You have your one minute of general public comment.
Okay, thank you. And I also support defunding the police and investing in housing and supportive community services, such as outlined by People's Budget LA and Black Lives Matter LA. The city has a moral obligation to address and rectify the present inequities that are a result of the history of stolen land and racial segregation that have disproportionately targeted black communities and other communities of color. We've imagined a better world where human lives matter more than economy and the status quo, and housing is a human right. So I'm asking the City Council to put lives first and make real commitments, if you're going to speak, or make any, any new policies, don't make circular comments, but don't actually commit to anything, take responsibility as a government official during this distortion- Don't actually commit to anything. Take responsibility as a government official during this historic moment. Thank you.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Lori Gay, item number 31, and general public comment.
Item would you like to speak on?
Item 31 and general public comment.
You have one minute for each.
Thank you. Good morning, council members and Madam President. My name is Lori Gay. I'm the president and CEO of Neighborhood Housing Services of L.A. County, and we have a 35-year history of serving in Los Angeles to help make sure that people get into affordable homeownership and stay there. When we passed our 25,000th unit last year of production, we started talking about how not enough was changing. So I want to mention today the importance of providing 31 and support in that, in particular, working with neighborhood-based groups, uh, making sure the community land trust, financial housing counselors, and other neighborhood-activated entities have a chance to get housing set-aside money through COVID. Most of the groups we're working now with are talking about a $300 million set-aside. We'd like to see that and more, if we can, for affordable housing, affordable homeownership, and the continuum of housing being supported, uh, through the council's efforts right now. We have a chance to make sure that black homeownership rises.
Thank you.
And that communities of color are supported.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, yes, this is Richie Sercenko, uh, People's City Council, Sunrise Women L.A. I'd like to speak on item 46 and general public comment, please.
You have one minute for each.
Yeah, item 46. Um, I think it's a nice gesture that, uh, you all are thinking about lighting up City Hall in honor of George Floyd, but it's important for everyone to remember that over 600 people in Los Angeles have lost their lives at the hands of the police in the last eight years. Um, these people's names include A.J. Weber, Rashario Mack, Akisha Wilson, Christopher DeAndre Mitchell, Kenneth Ross Jr., Meli Carrato. What have you all done for them? What have you done for their families? Have you lit up City Hall for them? So what's with the gesture for George Floyd? It's what you guys always do. It's all about the narrative and rhetoric, but no action from you guys. That's why people are so upset. That's why people hate you. People literally hate you all, all of you. People don't think you're good people. We think you're bad. Like, we think you're, like, malicious and corrupt, which I, which I assume most of you are. But the gesture to light up City Hall in honor of George Floyd, but nothing for the 600 people who have died at the hands of the police, while you were ready to push this police budget through for $3 billion to LAPD this year? What are you guys even doing? We see you. We know what you're doing, and this is why people hate you. Um, I'll move on to my general public comment. Um, you know, I, last week, I called in, said, "Nury, uh, and Weston, great job," and, you know, "We're willing to support you." Um, but we know what you all are doing, and with the potential of slow-walking, um, this motion and all motions, um, because once July 1st hits, uh, the budget will go into effect, and we will play this game again, where, you know, on June 1st, you all said that, "Oh, well, we'll have a month to get it done. We'll get it done." But, you know, July 1st is coming up soon, and you still haven't gotten anything done. If you're serious about that action, you're serious about listening to the people and, uh, um, you know, defunding police, then get something done before July 1st. Um, I yield my time. Fuck you, Paul Corretts.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Gina Viola, I'd like to give general public comment.
Great, you have a minute. Please go ahead.
Thanks. I need to make it quick because I'm waiting to make public comment at the L.A. Police Commission right now. Defund the LAPD. You have the means to do it. Take 20% of their budget tomorrow and solve houselessness in this city. You heard the chief say yesterday in the Budget and Finance Committee that he is forced to respond to calls because there's no one else to do it that has 24/7 access to answer those calls. You can actually make that change. You can make that change today. Please do it.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Sienna Larson. I'd like to make a general public comment.
Sure, you have a minute. Please go ahead.
Yeah, um, thank you. I'd like to echo what others are saying about working with BLM L.A. and the People's Budget L.A. to truly defund the police. Um, I viewed the presentation that they put together on June 15th, and they have laid out, um, a really wonderful proposal for defunding the police. And the current motion to divert calls and service provision away from the LAPD is a good first step, but we need to completely reimagine public safety to a greater extent, and we need to pass this budget on July 1st, so please divest in the police, adopt the people's budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yeah, hi, my name is David Brown. I live in, uh, District 13. I would like to speak on items, uh, 30 through 33, as well as general public comment.
Sure, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Great, thank you. I don't think I'll use my full time. Um, yeah, I just wanted to echo the sentiments, um, voiced by many here today, um, to urge you to please, um, to the utmost extent that you can, uh, defund the L.A. Police Department and, uh, reallocate that money towards other programs, such as, um, the implementation of support for people who are unhoused, uh, such as, uh, helping to keep people who are, uh, facing eviction because of COVID-19, uh, from being thrown out of their homes. Um, all of these things, and so many more, I think, um, are so much more important to the health and safety of Angelinos than a police department that is, uh, paid to harass and kill them. Um, I know I didn't say that I was going to speak on this, but the, um, the lighting up of City Hall in honor of George Floyd, I wanted to echo the sentiments of an earlier caller in saying that I think it is, um, uh, deeply disrespectful to the many, uh, Angelinos who have been killed by the police department and whose killers remain at large, um, and paid by the city, and who have not faced any disciplinary action, um, or any meaningful consequences for, uh, their wanton destruction of human life. Um, I would also say that, um, I know that the, uh, Weston Martinez amendment, uh, from, or, uh, proposal from last week, um, represents a very real chance, uh, for the City Council to, uh, to defund the police in a meaningful way, and I really applaud you for taking that step. I hope that both that, uh, analysis, when it comes out, is, uh, does indeed support defunding the police in favor of those nonviolent alternatives to policing, and also that, um, until that report is released, which I wish that there was some sort of a timetable for, you have the opportunity to implement the spirit of that proposal in other items that you're considering. Um, you could outline how you're going to defund the police in order, uh, to instead pay for, um, extensions of, uh, moratorium on evictions or, uh, rent relief. Um, so I would love to see more leadership of that sort coming out of City Council. Um, I think that it is deeply possible and deeply popular. Um, finally, I guess this would be the transition to general public comment. I, um...
Sure, please.
Think that, uh, it can, yeah, thank you. I think it'll seem, uh, like, uh, as has sometimes happened in the past, that you, uh, may be able to, um, hide something under the rug as far as waiting for momentum to die down on this issue, but I want to assure you that it will not, particularly as it pertains to the Olympics, um, and people will be watching to make sure that the Olympics are not used as an excuse to increase policing and to divert more funding away from other aspects of the city that badly need it. Please adopt the people's budget. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you, Speaker.
Speaker, please.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hello?
Yes, Speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Sunny Ortiz, and I'm calling on behalf of Bolo Heights. Um, well, I'm resident of Bolo Heights, but I'm calling, um, on behalf of, uh, the First Community Land Trust in the Eastside, here in the Comitado Comunitario Piedad Libre. Um, I'm calling to speak on item number 31 and public comment.
Okay, you have one minute for the item and then a minute for public comment.
Thank you. Um, so I'm calling because I believe that we cannot afford to repeat what happened in 2008, when our homes were bought out by corporations, stripping families and communities of equity. So we propose investing $300 million of City Care Act funding to purchase up to 750 units of single and multifamily housing before they are rumbled up by speculators and corporate buyers, and prioritizing acquisition in areas where lower-income residents are facing the most displacement pressure. This is a one-time investment that will be extorted by community land trusts, local residents, and neighborhood-based community development corporations to benefit families now and forever. By putting them under community ownership through local residents' affordable home ownership opportunities, um, and through the local land trusts and CDC, we can make sure that the homes are stabilized and affordable in, in the long run. Thank you.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hello?
Yes, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
This is Catherine Coe, and I'd like to speak on Agenda 13, 21, and public comment.
So you have two minutes and a minute for general. Please begin, Speaker.
Okay, so for Agenda 13, for the reappointment of Larry Gross, I just wanted to state that Larry Gross has been in utter failure, uh, as a member of the Animal Commissioners Meeting. He has been made aware of issues going on with Brenda Barnett and the shelters, and he has never asked questions or hold her accountable, but praises her for a job well done. Um, issues have been brought up to him via the Animal Commissioner meeting time after time after time, and he doesn't address any of it. He doesn't hold Brenda Barnett accountable for anything that she has done. So reappointing him would be absolutely doing nothing, and he does nothing to help the animals that are under the care of L.A. Animal Services. Um, that's all I have to say about Agenda 13 for Larry Gross. I want to move on to Agenda 21 for the Petco Foundation money that is being donated. Um, I want to know, how are you guys going to, um, keep... How are you guys going to keep track of what the money is actually being spent on? Because in the past, with the Animal Welfare Foundation, it has been used, misused by L.A. Animal Services for employee trips, travels, off-supplies, while dogs sleep on concrete floors. So how are you going to ensure that the Petco Foundation money is actually going to directly help, uh, enhance the lives of the animals at the shelter? Um, so LAAS has spent $203,000 of the Animal Welfare Fund on security cameras, and the security cameras at the South L.A. Shelter doesn't even work. So I want to make sure that every single cent for the Petco Foundation is accounted for and is actually being directly used to enhance the lives of these animals.
One minute of general. Please go into your general comment. You have a minute.
Okay, so for my general comment, I want you guys to put the reopening of the two shelters, which is West Valley Shelter and North Central Shelter, um, on the agenda and have it be voted, because it's a public health and safety issue. And I don't see a committee that is working on those. And the other thing is to open up the four remaining shelters to the public. It is an essential business and should not be closed to the public. Um, restaurants are open, nail salons are open, gyms are open, yet this essential shelter is still closed to the public. Um, and also, I'm calling for the immediate termination of Brenda Barnett, who has done nothing to help the animals. She has, uh, continued to kill healthy, adoptable animals under the false classification of them being, uh, unhealthy or aggressive, which is not true, and I want to...
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Um, yes, um, 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 uh, my name is Rabia Sanz with Esperanza Community Housing Corporation, and we are speaking to item 31. As proud members of the HLD L.A. Coalition, we strongly support the Coalition in calling for City Council to invest $300 million of the CARES Act funding to buy housing in areas where low-income residents are vulnerable to displacement driven by Wall Street speculators. By selling that land to land trusts and nonprofits, it can be permanently preserved as affordable housing, and the proceeds can be invested in new land purchases to remove housing from the speculative market and benefit existing residents in the long run and creating permanent affordable housing. We can't afford a repeat of the inequities that followed the prior crises, such as the '92 uprising and the 2008 housing crisis, that in fact destabilized our neighborhoods and led to the housing and homelessness crisis we saw before this pandemic and that are worsening during this pandemic. So this is what we're asking you to do. We're asking you to support neighborhood partnerships that will provide long-term affordable homeownership for black families and communities of color that have suffered from years of disinvestment and gentrification. Please partner with affordable homeownership providers and neighborhood-based CDCs to acquire single and multifamily properties, support hard-approved housing counselors to help their families for homeownership.
Thank you.
And provide down...
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Great, my name is Johnny. Um, I live in Gilce, Sadias. Uh, and this is a general public comment. It'll be quick.
Okay, you have a minute. Please go ahead.
Hi, um, my name's Johnny. Uh, I'm a member in No Olympics L.A. and several other groups, uh, that were represented on the call today. I want to echo the sentiment for stronger renter protections and to defund the police, and I want to mention that in addition to the 2028 Olympics, which are a national threats and security event, an excuse to expand LAPD and other law enforcement agencies, so is the 2026 World Cup and the 2022 Super Bowl. So we have to be having this conversation now about dismantling these mega events that will only increase the police state, increase, and increase collaboration between ICE, CBP, and L.A. Sheriff's Department and LAPD. I yield my time.
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Jeffrey Williams. Can you hear me?
Yes, what item would you like to speak on?
I'd like to speak on item 2, 46, and general public comment.
So you have two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin, Speaker.
Great. Yeah, on item number two, it's absolutely disgusting that you're proposing a, an increase in ambulance fees during a global pandemic, especially in a country with really poor public health, uh, and health care for everyone. Um, so, yeah, that's horrible. Defund the police and fund ambulances instead with that money. On item number 46, um, I'd like to echo the sentiment that doing a memorial lighting of City Hall or whatever for George Floyd is ultimately disrespectful to the victims of the LAPD, who have been killed over the last, you know, 600, over the last eight years or so. Um, so again, just, I don't know how you could possibly justify doing such a meaningless gesture instead of actually helping to solve the problems that result in a death like George Floyd. Now I'll move on to general public comment. Uh, again, defund the police. Do it now. Use that money to help unhoused people, people who, with public health or healthcare needs, all of that. Defund the police. I yield my time. Fuck you.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Um, Hannah Kimmel, general public comment.
You have one minute.
Thank you. I'm an attorney with Betsetics Preventing and Ending Homelessness Project. Today, I'm speaking in support of creating a tenant defense program. Initially, the program will provide services to tenants at risk of losing their housing. Once the emergency tenant protection expires and after the judicial council rule sunsets, the program will provide full scope representation to tenants facing evictions. COVID-19 has exacerbated the need for a tenant defense program. Mayor Garcetti reported that L.A.'s unemployment rate climbed from 4.7% in February to 24% in April. Experts believe record unemployment rates will lead to a tsunami of evictions. A UCLA report estimates that over 300,000 households in L.A. County face a high risk of eviction. Providing legal representation for these tenants is crucial to protect... Providing legal representation for these tenants is crucial to protecting their housing because many tenants are unaware of their legal rights. We often see tenants move out because the landlord tells them to, not because any court process has taken place. Legal representation will level the playing field for tenants facing eviction and would stem the tide of homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Burke. Can you hear me?
Yes, what item would you like to speak on?
I would like to make a general public comment.
You have one minute.
Uh, thank you. So first of all, thank you for scheduling this meeting at the same time as the police commission meeting, uh, so that was a complete accident, not intentional at all. Uh, we're demanding that you make a far more substantial cut to the LAPD, such as that reflected in the People's Budget L.A. service, uh, results, survey results that Black Lives Matter so clearly presented to you. We don't want these reforms that won't actually help anything. How about instead of 40 hours of mental health training for cops, we hire actual mental health experts, just for instance? Uh, prove you care about people more than money, adopt the People's Budget, defund the police, care not cops, Black Lives Matter, I yield my time, fuck you.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, this is Morgan, District 4. I'd like to give general, um, public comment, please.
Sure, you have a minute. Please go ahead.
I'd like to echo the exact same comments of Lindsay before me and also, uh, say, the motion to divi- divert, um, calls and service provision away from the LAPD, while it's important for staff, we need to reimagine public state, the H.O.G., then motions are well and good, but, uh, I'm looking for actions. I demand that the City Council work closely with BLM L.A. and the People's Budget L.A. to truly defund the police. We don't want lights at City Hall, we want justice. Like, are you kidding? If people are dying and you want to make a light show and give $3 billion to the police who are doing the murders? In eight years, LAPD totaled 600 in elinas, but you want to pretend you care about George Floyd? If you're anti-racist, quit your job. I mean this with love, I yield my time, fuck you.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Uh, I would like to speak on Item 13, Larry Gross, and Item 21, Petco, and public comment.
Sure, so you have two minutes on the item followed by one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Okay, um, regarding Larry Gross coming back, I really, really do not want him back. Um, I think he does a terrible job. I think, um, his Facebook page and all of his political posts are completely unprofessional, and I'm wondering where he gets the time during the workday to, um, spend time on Facebook posting about Trump and religion and all of these very personal feelings he has while he should be working on the animals. Um, it's very upsetting to me that our taxpayer money goes to his salary, and he is clearly not doing his job. Um, he does not respond to any of our complaints, and I do not want him back. Please get him out, resign, quit, go away, Larry Gross. Can't stand him, want him gone. Please, get rid of him. Um, Petco, the donation that Petco gave to Los Angeles Animal Services is going to be wasted. They're going to use it on going on trips and other recreational use, like they do everything else. Los Angeles animals are sleeping on concrete, they are getting euthanized when they are three years old and younger, completely healthy, happy animals who are getting killed because Brenda Barnett does not do her job, and this is something that's continuing and nobody is doing anything about. Mayor Garcetti does not respond to our messages and our emails. Um, so Petco is wasting their donation, and nobody is overseeing this, nobody is looking at where these funds go or where they're allocated, and I'm so upset about this, and I'm so, so upset that Los Angeles Animal Services is completely corrupt and nobody is investigating it. We want an independent investigation of Los Angeles Animal Services. We have demanded it, we have asked for it, and soon we are going to protest in the same way as other people are protesting. And I think lots of groups are going to protest about what they're angry about, and it's going to be really, really chaotic. So you guys should really start to listen and not just hold these bullshit, uh, little phone calls and just act like you care. You should really start to take action and not do light shows. You should really make a change because soon there's just going to be an uprising in every area, and you're going to be like, we should have listened. My public comment is going to be about the resignation for the 500 millionth time of Brenda Barnett. She is a liar, compulsive, habitual liar. She is corrupt, and she is in the pocket of Paul Coress and Mayor Garcetti, and you guys protect her, but it's going to come to an end really soon, really, really soon. She needs to stop killing young, adoptable animals. She needs to stop covering up for all of the lies and mistakes you guys have made with those animals because we have a lot of proof, and it's been sent to you in an email, and you're ignoring it.
Thank you, Speaker.
Okay.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Oh, hello? Uh, this is Teddy Park, CD 14. I'd like to speak on Items 25, 30, 31, and public comment.
Sure, you have three minutes for the items followed by one minute for public comment. Please begin.
All right, thank you. So for Item 25, the ad hoc on COVID-19 recovery, um, I just, I wanted to say I commend the City Council for adding the amendment barring landlords who receive funds from this from evicting tenants for six months. I think this is an important step, but also definitely not enough. Um, repeating something that one of the other callers had said before, uh, and this is regarding Item 30 and 31, we need to build a community land trust. We need to get public land for people who cannot afford this, who in a growing recession and pandemic, and God knows what else 2020 is going to bring us, we need protection for protests, and it's about damn time that you guys start listening. Moving on to public comment, uh, just want to reiterate to defund the police, adopt the People's Budget L.A., um, and speaking for the unhoused community, we need to stop sweeps, we need services. Thank you, I yield my time, and fuck you to John Lee, CD 12 specifically. Thank you.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, what item would you like to speak on?
Hello, I would like to speak on general public comment.
Sure, you have a minute. Please go ahead.
Yes, hello, my name is Bruno, and I live in District 13. I've lived in Los Angeles all of my life, and I want to say I endorse the People's Budget L.A., um, spearheaded by Black Lives Matter Los Angeles, and urge you to adopt it, um, urging you to defund the police, disarm the police, and dismantle the police. All of us on this call and several and several thousand of us who have marched for the past three weeks want care, not cops. We know we live in the most dangerous poli-, uh, city with the most dangerous police department, 600 killings in 2012. This is not normal. This should not be normal, and you all are complicit when giving $3 billion to people who have committed rape, assault, and murder. The real looters, the real violent people, we all know, the people in L.A. who grew up here, we all know the police. The police have terrorized and committed immense violence, death, to Black people in this city and people of color. This is unconscionable, um, and really, really violent. Cutting 100 and 150 million is not enough when a budget is over $3 billion-
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
-our tax dollars. As you hear every week-
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Katie Schaefer, calling in from Bonnens District. I'd like to speak on Item 2, 46, and general public comment.
Sure, so you have two minutes for the items followed by one minute for general public comment.
Thank you. So on Item 2, on Item 2, people are already Ubering to go to the hospital instead of taking an ambulance because they can't afford it. Like, what on earth are you thinking? It's already overly expensive. So instead of continuing to rob the already struggling taxpayers of this city, you either tax the wealthy or, imagine this, defund the police to cover the cost for the economic fallout from COVID-19. Item 46, echoing the comments of callers before, how about instead of lighting up the hall for George Floyd, you light it up for Andre Guarado, who was murdered last week in Gardena by being shot seven times in the back from the Sheriff's Department, who then proceeded to break the cameras in an attempt to bury the evidence of their murder, of their murder? Or over the 600 people murdered by your thugs who you won't stand up to? It's not just despicable, it's unacceptable. Now, in regards to general public comment, I just want to start by lifting up the BLM leaders who've been advocating for these changes for years with their calls falling on complete deaf ears from a council who doesn't care about Black and Brown communities more than they care about their own wealth and power. You could all take a lesson in leadership and grace and community management from them. I know I look to them for a guidance on a absolute daily basis as opposed to this council or this mayor. We don't want the LAPD managing mental health. They themselves need serious amounts of mental health and anger management, not to mention there are mental health experts who have gone through years upon years of higher education, sitting on hundreds of thousands of dollars of student loans, and it's insulting to them and their insurmountable debt to act as though this men- mental health can be condensed into a one-week class to thugs. I don't understand how the People's Budget is even a question or a debate, or how further meaningful cuts haven't been produced by this council. You guys need to propose an actual budget cut and dare the mayor to reject it. Put him on display, put his political opportunity and future at risk, back him into a corner to reject what this city is overwhelmingly crying out for. Adopt the People's Budget L.A. Plain and simple, it's just the right thing to do. Defund the LAPD. I yield my time.
Thank you, that now concludes public comment. Members, um, appreciate all those who joined us for public comment. We will now recess for 20 minutes, recess for 20 minutes. We will now recess for 20 minutes. Recession for 20 minutes.
Members, we're back in session. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, present.
Bonin.
Bonin, present.
Buscaino.
Present.
Sidi. Harris Dawson. Kuritz.
Present.
Krikory. Lee.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
Olferro.
Present.
Price.
Here.
Rodriguez. Wesson.
Wesson here.
Harris Dawson, present.
Sidi, present.
Eleven members present and a court member present.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can you... You want to clarify item 26?
Yes, Madam President. The continuance is to June 30th, 2020. Again, item 26 is continued to June 30th, 2020.
Mr. Kuritz, you have your virtual hand on. Did you want to speak? No? Okay. Just remove your hand. Thank you. Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and vote on the following items. Item number 10, items 13 through 25, items 27 through 30, item 33, 34, 36, 37, and item 39 through 50.
Please call the roll. Madam President, items 2 and 3 are also available. Would you like to add that on to the vote?
Yes, let's go ahead and do that. Mr. Bloomingfield?
Yes, Madam Speaker. I had called item 10 special and put a motion forward on that to remand it back to South Valley and planned on speaking on that, so I would ask that that not be included in the unblocked consent.
Yes, sir. And then, for clarification, this would be items 2, 3, 13 through 25, 27 through 30, 33, 34, 36, 37, 39 through 50.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on those items. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, aye.
Sidi.
Sidi, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Kuritz.
Aye.
Krikory. Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Olferro.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez. Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Eleven ayes. These items are adopted. Madam President, for clarification, the ordinance on items 3 through and 16 are carried over one week to June 30th, unless reconsidered with 12 members present.
Okay, without objection. Do you want to move on to items 4 through 7? Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Madam President. Items 4 through 7 are hearings regarding the establishment of business improvement districts. We're required to hear from all members of the public who wish to speak on these items. Therefore, Madam President, I recommend that we reopen the phone lines to members of the public who did not already have an opportunity to speak to the council, but still wish to speak on those items. Members of the public should dial in to speak on items 4 through 7 only. Perhaps we should have the clerk reread the dial-in information, just so people have it, and that will also give people an opportunity to dial in if they want to speak on items 4 through 7.
Okay. As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment on items 4 through 7 only should call 669-254- on items 4 through 7 only should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 160-535-8466. Then press the pound key. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID number. Once submitted into the meeting, press *9 to request to speak. Let me repeat. and use meeting ID number 160-535-8466 and then press the pound key. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID number. Once submitted into the meeting, press *9 to request to speak.
So, let's see if there are speakers who wish to speak on those items.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hello?
Yes, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
You seem to be limiting that to 4 through 7. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Previn. You may only speak on items 4, 5, 6, or 7.
Will I also get my general public comment?
No, we've already taken general public comment. Do you want to speak on items 4, 5, 6, or 7?
Yeah, I'll speak on CD 10, item 4, which is a business improvement district.
Sure, you have a minute. Please go ahead.
Business improvement... No, I'm going to speak on all of the items, 5 through 6 and 7 as well. They're all business improvement districts. And, you know, people have the feeling that they're used to beef up security to protect businesses at the expense of the money possibly being used for areas outside the district as well. To give an example, in this area, or in, for example, Studio City, we have a business improvement district. But the whole east side of Ventura Boulevard gets none of that love. So it's very... Some of the earlier speakers used the term self-serving. And that's how business improvement districts work. But what I wanted to say about defunding the police is that we should also be defunding the apparatus.
No, Mr. Previn. Mr. Previn, you need to...
That does things like this, tries to limit what I can focus on.
Yes, we're limiting it. Do you want to continue to speak on the bid establishments or not?
35:00 in the morning on a business day, and you shut public comments...
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Previn. You're off-topic. Let's move on to the next speaker, please.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Talking about the business improvement districts.
So there are items 4, 5, 6, 7. Which ones do you want to speak on?
4, 5, 6, and 7.
Okay, please go ahead.
This is Adams' property business improvement district. This money should be going not just to businesses. We have heavy, heavy subsidies to corporate businesses. Corporate businesses should be excluded. Instead of more looting and campaign contributions, which most of this is probably going to be used for, this should go specifically to small businesses. This ordinance does not say that will happen where the looting continues by the L.A. city councilmen, council people.
Sorry, can... Would you please stick directly to the agenda items, please?
Englanders are going to jail.
So, Speaker, please stick to items 4, 5, 6 direction... Directly, please.
That's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about corruption in the property and business improvement districts. Listen, instead of trying to cut people off. You spend all your energy trying to cut people off and control what they're saying. I'm talking about item number...
Speaker, get back on topic right now or we're going to cut you off.
I'm cutting you off.
Okay, let's move on to the next speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hello, this is Christina Krapp. I had called in on items 8 through 10. I'm sorry, I kept getting cut off. I just want clarification. Are we not taking public comment on those at all? Or should I call in later?
No. Speaker, you already spoke. This is only the bid items, items 4, 5, 6, or 7. Do you want to speak on those?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I didn't speak. This is Christina Krapp. I represent one of the appellantants on items 8 through 10. And I just want to confirm whether we should call in later or whether no public comment will be taken on items 8 through 10.
So, we've already taken comment on that, and this is for the bid items only. So I'm sorry, we're going to have to move on to the next speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
I think no one's there. Let's move on to the next speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Speaker?
I wanted to speak on public comment, so...
No, 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 no. This is only for the bid establishment items 4, 5, 6, or 7. Do you wish to speak on those?
I understand, but I was waiting earlier and then...
I'm sorry. No, we have to move on. Let's move on to the next speaker, please. There are no other speakers, so we can close public comment on items 4, 5, 6, and 7, Madam President.
Madam President, may I make an announcement? Regarding items 4 through 7, the public hearing items are not... The public hearing on... Is now closed for items 4 through 7. Those are the business improvement districts. The tabulation of ballots shall take place in City Hall in room 223 immediately.
Okay, which is before us now?
Items 4 through 7 can now be voted by council.
Okay, let's go ahead and open the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, aye.
Sidio.
Sidio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Harris Dawson, yes.
Kuretz.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Okay.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Oh, Rodriguez.
Aye.
Okay, Madam Clerk, it appears we have 12 members now, so let's reconsider the ordinances at this time?
Yes, Madam President. For the record, 4 through 7 are 13 ayes. Those items are adopted forthwith. And now, to reconsider items 3 and 16 for the ordinance.
Okay, let's vote on reconsideration first. Let's go ahead and open the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidio.
Sidio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Harris Dawson, yes.
Kuretz.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
13 ayes.
Okay, members, that... Those items are now before us. Let's go ahead and open the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, aye.
Sidio.
Sidio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Harris Dawson, yes.
Kuretz.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
13 ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and move on to item number 10. Call special by Mr. Blumenfield.
Thank you, Madam President. So, item 10 is... I 245'd this one and brought it forward. It deals with a project in my district, and the project never got a proper hearing in the South Valley planning. And the reason it didn't is because it was right at the beginning of COVID, and there were a number of projects. And what happened was that most of the developers who had their projects were asked to continue it. This one particular developer strategically said no because they knew that it would then be approved by default, which is exactly the opposite of how we want things done. We want community input. We want this to be done, especially a project like this that has major environmental consequences and that the SEQA information was just not adequate. So, we 245'd it, was prepared to move forward and hear that. But I guess just last week, there was some additional documents sent by the developer on the SEQA. And so, the attorneys advised that it get sent back to the South Valley Planning Commission, which is why my ask is that we remand it, that we veto it, and we remand it back to the South Valley Planning Commission so that it can be properly heard. But what I'd like to do before we do that is to ask our city attorney a question because a number of the community folks have concerns about what's going on. And I want to make sure that the SEQA process is explained, that they clarify the path for SEQA on the record. SEQA document was also appealed, and we want to know, will the EIR be heard by the zoning administrator... Be heard with the zoning administrator determination at the South Valley Planning Commission? Will they be done simultaneously? Or will the EIR appeal with a track map have to come back to council to be heard? So if I could ask the city attorney that question on the record.
Okay, give me a second, Mr. Blumenfield. Look, we're letting the appropriate city attorney into our meeting. Just a second.
Thank you. Just so my colleagues understand, this project, this is not... There is no affordable housing in this project. This is on... On open space, and they're... These are very large homes that they're talking about. What are you making her?
Can I have a break?
So, we should have somebody in just a second, Mr. Blumenfield.
Great, thank you.
The old store coming up.
So, my colleague, Adrian Crissani, should be in the Zoom meeting, I believe.
This is Adrian.
Hi, Adrian.
Thank you so much. You know, if we're giving the heads up, we can have the appropriate staff ready for answering any questions. So, Mr. Blumenfield, go ahead.
Great, thanks. Sorry about that. I thought that that had been done, so apologize. This is on item 10, and just... We wanted to make... To clarify the path for SEQA on the record in terms of what happens now.
Got it.
Remanding this back.
Okay. So, one way or the other, the EIR will need to be certified before the project can proceed. So, if the ZAD is remanded back to the APC, the APC could certify the EIR when it considers the ZAD, if it approves it. Alternatively, the EIR could be certified by the city council when the map is considered. It sort of depends on, you know, which item moves first. If the ZAD is certified by the APC... If the EIR is certified by the APC when the ZAD is considered, that can still be appealed. That certification could be appealed to city council if it has not yet acted on the map. So, a lot of it is timing, but in either case, the EIR must be certified before the project can be approved.
And just... I just want to drill down a little bit more because one of the callers who called in was one of the appellantants, and they asked me to ask you specifically the question, you know, to confirm that the SEQA appeal can be continued without the written consent from the developer per the SEQA ordinance. Is that true?
Yeah, the SEQA... There is no consent required for SEQA. And, like I said earlier, the project needs the SEQA before it can be approved.
Okay. And then, secondary, just to confirm that the APC can hear and determine the ZAD that's being remanded back without SEQA because that part is being continued.
Well, when it takes its action, the APC can take the action to certify the SEQA. It can't approve a project without also approving the SEQA. But that determination by the APC can be appealed to the city council.
Got it.
The ZAD isn't appealable, but the SEQA would be.
Right. But they can... They can certainly hear it and determine it back at the APC.
Correct.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
You're welcome. Sure.
And with that, colleagues, I would ask that we...
part, lowest point since nineteen fifty, the year I was born. In addition to all the societal challenges African Americans continually have to endure, it's no wonder our home ownership rates have taken such a devastating decline. It's time to reinvent. You heard this item in the ad hoc committee last week, but I think it's an important issue to bring to everyone's attention. As we know, the new homelessness numbers were released last week and yet again, the city of L.A., the numbers are up. African Americans continue to make up a disproportionate amount of the homelessness and on top of that, the black homeownership rate has hit its lowest point since nineteen fifty, as I said before, my year of birth. We have an opportunity to act with the CARES Act funds to invest in bringing more people off the streets. And we don't have to just use traditional approaches, but can look into land acquisition and home ownership opportunities and partnering with community trust groups and other organizations in the city. I'm excited for the city to work with our local government partners and community organizations in addressing this issue and I look forward to hearing recommendations for the homelessness recovery roadmap. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Price. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
I'm unmuting. We're probably going to go to...
Blumenfield.
Next, aren't we? Yeah.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, aye.
Sidiel. Harris Dawson.
Harris Dawson, yes.
Kuratz.
Sidiel, aye.
Oh, Sidiel, aye, thank you. Kuratz.
Aye.
Gregorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price. Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Thirteen ayes, the item is adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item thirty-five. Okay, we're going to vote on this item as amended. Let's go ahead and call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, aye.
Sidiel. Harris Dawson.
Harris Dawson, yes.
Kuratz.
Sidiel, aye.
Oh, Sidiel, aye, thank you. Kuratz.
Aye.
Gregorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price. Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Thirteen ayes, the item is adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item thirty-five. Okay, we're going to vote on this item as amended. Let's go ahead and call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidiel.
Sidiel, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Harris Dawson, yes.
Kuratz.
Aye.
Gregorian recused. Next is Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Twelve ayes, this item is adopted as amended.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move on to item thirty-eight called special by Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. O'Farrell?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, thank you. Colleagues, as we all know, because we do the work, we do the research, resolutions are not empty gestures on this council. The resolutions that we do sometimes have resulted in significant levels of funding to address some of the greatest needs of the day. Item thirty-eight is one such resolution and it's Assembly Bill thirty-three hundred. It was drafted by Assembly Member Miguel Santiago and about a dozen other Assembly members, many of them local, Los Angeles area Assembly members, and has garnered widespread support up and down the state of California. Assembly Bill thirty-three hundred establishes a two billion dollar fund to address homelessness comprehensively for the fiscal year beginning twenty twenty-one across the entire state of California. Furthermore, it establishes a yearly two billion dollar fund. Here's how it passed the Assembly and then I'm going to give you a little bit of background on what led to that vote. There were sixty-two approved, two in opposition, and sixteen abstained. Right now, AB thirty-three hundred is pending in the Senate Budget and Appropriation Committee. The breakdown of the two billion dollars is as follows. One point one billion dollars would go to counties and continuums of care that have been established in those counties. Eight hundred million dollars would be going to cities with a population of minimal three hundred thousand residents. And then one hundred million dollars would go to nonprofit housing developers, specifically the provision requires that that funding be applied to housing for people experiencing homelessness. Now, this bill was worked on for, gosh, at least a year and so much work went into this initiative long, a lot longer than one year. One of the reasons that we're able to get a bill that I feel works really well for Los Angeles is because of the work that this council has done. I know that in the past year, I've gone up to Sacramento a number of times, four times, I think, total. On one of those lobbying trips, I was accompanied by Mr. Gregorian and we've been making the case in Los Angeles for a long, long time that we need something that is in the equivalent of a match. Back in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, Los Angeles voters did something that no other city or county across the state of California had ever done. We voted to essentially tax ourselves and create a fund to build ten thousand units of permanent supportive housing and then create another fund countywide to allocate and fund resources for people experiencing homelessness to go along with the permanent supportive housing units. That, that bill, HHH, was the city of Los Angeles specifically. Now, we've known for a long, long time that ten thousand units of permanent supportive housing, even though we're going to reach that goal, we are going to reach the objective of satisfying the will of voters in Los Angeles, we're going to get to the ten thousand units of HHH housing. But we know with this latest homeless count of over forty-one thousand people experiencing homelessness in the city of Los Angeles, even ten thousand units of permanent housing is not going to be nearly enough. We knew it wouldn't be years ago, so we've been working on getting additional funding from the state, from the feds, whatever we can generate locally as well, which is what led to this comprehensive bill. I'm very, very proud that my team and city family has gone up to Sacramento where we've been lobbying for a long, long time on this comprehensive package that could result in housing tens of thousands of more Angelenos. And that is the objective. It existed long before the COVID-nineteen pandemic struck. We all know it, we see it in our neighborhoods, we see it everywhere. It is a moral catastrophe that we see on our streets every day. And so what I wanted to convey here is this isn't just some sort of resolution that we easily vote to support. No, this is a culmination of years of hard work convincing the governor, convincing state senators, not just local delegation state senators, but in other cities and other parts of the state of California that I've met with on several occasions, as well as our local Assembly Member delegation, which is unanimous support of this because they understand the gravity of homelessness in Los Angeles city and county, but also other Assembly members that represent San Jose, San Francisco, San Diego, and other parts of the state of California. This is the kind of bill that will get statewide support and that's what we need in order to address the crises of our day. Homelessness is something that's going to be with us for a while and it's imperative we put the building blocks in place, working across all jurisdictions to make sure that we can really make a dent, get people under a roof, get them housed temporarily at first if necessary, but certainly the long-term goal, short and long-term goal, quite frankly, is to get people housed permanently and on a path to wellness. That's what this bill accomplishes and when we pass this resolution, it sends a signal to Sacramento and puts additional pressure on the governor to sign it once it is finally adopted. Lastly, I'll say this, Governor Newsom has said nothing other than we need funding to house people who are homeless. So this is in keeping with what everyone has said up and down the state at every level of government and this shows a clear direction from the city of Los Angeles that this is something we believe in and this is something that we are committed to. So colleagues, I ask for your aye vote and I also ask that we move to approve the CLA's revised resolution because it was originally introduced before this two billion dollar state bill was introduced. And with that, Madam President, I ask for unanimous aye vote.
Thank you, I will go ahead and second that. Mr. Kuratz?
Yeah, this is a very exciting measure. I thank Mr. O'Farrell both for bringing this forward and for his good work on it and others. I'm just wondering if you could speak to how much we think we actually wind up getting at the end for our homelessness in the city and also of the money that goes to the county, do we have any possibility of getting significant help as a portion of that as well?
Thank you, Mr. Kuratz. It's a great question because our advocacy and our lobbying will not stop even once this bill is signed into law by the governor, but in terms of the allocations, it's very complex and maybe the CLA could step forward and answer some of those questions. I went over the actual allocation of the two billion dollars across the state, but it's very clear that we're going to have to continue working in partnership and sort of in the spirit of cajoling again, the county, that the city of Los Angeles, which has just over one, or forty percent of the county's population, that we get our fair share even with their allocation. So that's something that we'll all have to stay involved in, but perhaps the CLA could step forward and answer that question in greater detail.
We have our CLA approaching the table.
Thank you.
Can you speak a little louder into the mic?
Let me sit down. I'm sorry, Mr. O'Farrell, we don't have that information in front of us. We did include in the resolution to seek amendments to make the allocations more commensurate to need and so we will be monitoring that to ensure that the maximum amount is made available to the extent that certain amounts are made to the county. Some of it will be population-based, but it remains to be seen how much actually will come to L.A. Mr. O'Farrell, I believe you're on mute.
Thank you, Ms. So. I'm glad you mentioned the, the push that the funding be commensurate with the need because that is the gospel that I preached with every lawmaker that I spoke with in Sacramento over those four different trips I went on and what we communicated very clearly with the governor's office each time as well. So I think that's, that's exactly what we have to keep the pressure on to make sure that the allocations of funding are commensurate with the need in Los Angeles and that's a very strong position to come from because we might be forty percent of the county's population, but we have well over half of the county's homeless population. So again, we need funding commensurate with that need as well and the county's share of this funding from AB thirty-three hundred must also apply commensurate with what is needed in the city of Los Angeles.
We couldn't agree more.
Okay, anything else, Mr. O'Farrell? Okay, let's go ahead and prepare to vote. Let's go ahead and prepare to vote as amended.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, aye.
Sidiel.
Sidiel, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Harris Dawson, yes.
Kuratz.
Kuratz, aye.
Gregorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Thirteen ayes, the item is adopted as amended.
Okay, members, we are going to go into closed session on item fifty-one. Mr. Gregorian, would you like to speak on items fifty-two through fifty-six before we take a vote?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Budget and finance did waive consideration of all of those matters. They appear to be routine settlements. If members have questions or concerns, we can consider them in closed session. Otherwise, they seem appropriate for resolution.
Okay, if there are no other questions, I'm going to go ahead and ask the city clerk to read the settlement amounts and also item fifty-seven has been continued until tomorrow.
Great.
Thank you, Madam President. Item fifty-two in the case entitled No de la Rosa et al. versus Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transit Authority, there is a recommendation to expend up to three hundred thousand in settlement. Item number fifty-three in the case entitled Myra Alvarez versus Hawaii Wizard City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to a hundred fifty thousand in settlement. Item fifty-four in the case entitled Clifford Anderson et al. versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to a hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred seventy-three dollars and ten cents in settlement. Item fifty-five in the case entitled Catherine Anderson versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to a hundred fifty thousand in settlement. Item fifty-four in the case entitled Clifford Anderson et al. versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to a hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred seventy-three dollars and ten cents in settlement. Item fifty-five in the case entitled Catherine Anderson versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to nine hundred fifty thousand in settlement. Finally, item fifty-six in the case entitled Justo Argueta versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend up to one million, four hundred sixty-four thousand, five hundred twenty-three dollars and forty cents in settlement.
Okay, let's prepare to vote.
Mr. Gregorian, would you like to speak on items 52 through 56 before we take a vote?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Budget and finance did waive consideration of all of those matters. They appear to be routine settlements. If members have questions or concerns, we can consider them in closed session. Otherwise, they seem appropriate for resolution.
Okay, if there are no other questions, I'm going to go ahead and ask the city clerk to read the settlement amounts. And also, item 57 has been continued until tomorrow.
Thank you, Madam President. Item 52 in the case entitled No de la Rosa et al. versus Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transit Authority, there is a recommendation to expend up to $300,000 in settlement. Item number 53 in the case entitled Myra Alvarez versus Huesar City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to expend up to $150,000 in settlement. Item 54 in the case entitled Clifford Anderson et al. versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $123,373.10 in settlement. Item 55 in the case entitled Catherine Anderson versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $950,000 in settlement. Finally, item 56 in the case entitled Justo Argueta versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend up to $1,464,523.40 in settlement.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on those items.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidio.
Sidio, aye.
Harris-Dawson.
Harris-Dawson, yes.
Coretts.
Aye.
Gregorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Wesson. Councilmember Wesson?
Wesson, aye.
13 ayes. These items are adopted.
Ms. Rodriguez, did you have a question?
No, Madam President. On item number 12, I have a, I'd like a motion on behalf of Councilmember Rue to move to approve the PCN application for item 12.
Okay, you need, um...
Second by Mr. Buscaino.
Let's go ahead and call for a vote. Call the roll, Madam Clerk, on item 12.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidio.
Sidio, aye.
Harris-Dawson.
Yes.
Coretts.
Yes.
Gregorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
13 ayes. The item is adopted.
Okay, members, we're going to prepare for closed session on item 51.
If not out already, then all you need to do is hit submit and confirm your service request, and you're done. A service request number will pop up. From here, you can create another request for this or another location, return to the homepage, or exit the app. But before you go, you'll see we provided the information of the appropriate agency handling your specific request. This will help you follow up if necessary. Let's go back to the homepage to check out some more details. Now, in order to view your service request, you first have to log on or register for an account. If you have an LADWP online account, you can use that login information. If not, you can still create your own MyLA311 account. The process is very similar to most online accounts. You can also find city facilities near your current location by selecting the city info icon. You can either enter an address or touch the funnel icon to narrow or expand your search. Simply select the areas or services you are looking for and then touch the icons that pop up on the map. You can look up information about city services from our city services directory. Other options include city bill pay and even viewing city social media feeds using City Hall News. Now, if you prefer to use the service from your computer, simply go to lacity.org and click the 311 icon and then select your choice from the menu. MyLA311, it puts the power of City Hall in your hands.
Thank you. And all I wanna do is say thank you. And all I wanna do is say thank you. And all I wanna do is say thank you. I was scared. Insecurity got the best of me. Caught up in fear. False evidence appearing weak. But your love and your light ignited a fire inside of me. And I came to believe in a power that's greater than me. And all I wanna do is say thank you. And all I wanna do is say thank you. And all I wanna do is say thank you. And all I wanna do is say thank you. I'm grateful for what I've got, who I am and what I'm not. Oh, what a lovely bouquet of flowers and for Bloom, you're so inspiring. You put your trust in me and shared your gift unselfishly, courageously and willingly, with class and dignity. You're exciting and mesmerizing. You're sexy and tantalizing. Here's wishing you all the best. Cheers to you and God bless. All I wanna do is say thank you. All I wanna do is say thank you. All I wanna do is say thank you. All I wanna do, Marsha, is say thank you. Sylvia and Marsha P., thank you. All I wanna do is say thank you. Marsha P. and Sylvia, yes. All I wanna do is say thank you.
When you're interacting with others who are not members of your household in both public and private spaces, wear a cloth face covering. Before you put it on, wash your hands or sanitize them. Before you take it off, make sure your hands are clean. And after you take it off, wash your hands again. Wash your cloth face coverings often. Wear a clean one every single day. Learn more at publichealth.lacity.gov. Slowing the spread of COVID-19 means making sure that people who are sick don't infect others. If you are positive for COVID-19 or likely positive, please self-isolate to avoid infecting others, including people you live with.
My name is Ken Pratt, Deputy Executive Officer for Metro. Welcome to Union Station. Welcome to Union Station, the transportation hub in the heart of Los Angeles. This is your stop for L.A. history, art, and culture at the largest multimodal passenger terminal in the western United States. For millions of people traveling to and through the city of Los Angeles by train, Union Station will be a stop along their journey. Since opening in 1939, the Los Angeles Union Station has been regarded as "the last of the great train stations." It is also considered one of L.A.'s architectural gems, featuring a Mission Modern style and innovative blend of Spanish colonial, Mission Revival, and Art Deco architecture. Designed by a father-son architect team, John and Donald Parkinson, Union Station was created with the California lifestyle in mind. Union Station offers a spacious ticket concourse that includes a 110-foot-long American black walnut ticket counter, a waiting room with 40-foot windows adorned with brass, massive Art Deco chandeliers, inlaid marble floors, hand-painted mission tiles, and expansive shaded patios, towering palm trees, and a 100-foot clock tower. These architectural features, along with its history and cultural significance, have helped Union Station receive Historic Cultural Monument Designation from the City of Los Angeles in 1972 and recognition by the National Register of Historic Places in 1980. Today, Union Station is more than just a transportation center. It is an experience for both visitors and commuters. It is home to The Trax Restaurant, one of the city's most unique formal culinary experiences, and the Imperial Western Beer Company and Streamliner Bar, as well as a variety of casual eateries. Artwork from locally renowned artists can also be seen throughout the station. Take the Metro or the Dash and enjoy the sights, bites, and culture of this architectural marvel and Los Angeles landmark. I am Ken Pratt, Deputy Executive Officer with Metro, and I invite you to come and discover Union Station.
One of the most powerful tools we have to slow the spread of COVID-19 is physical distancing. When you're out of your house, please stay at least six feet away from all other people and wear a cloth face covering.
The 2020 Census is here, and no matter who you are or where you come from, if you live in the United States, you need to fill out the questionnaire and be counted. You have three ways to do it: online, over the phone, or by mail. For more information, visit census.lacity.org.
You may have noticed that at some intersections, the walk sign at the crosswalk starts a little earlier than the green light for people driving. This is called a leading pedestrian interval. It's a transportation term that means those of us using the sidewalk get a three-to-seven-second head start over cars. Giving pedestrians just a few seconds to fully enter the crosswalk makes it much more likely that drivers who are making turns will see them. This very simple timing change can have a big impact on street safety. Leading pedestrian intervals reduce crashes between people driving and people walking by as much as 60%. Moving L.A. forward.
I'm very proud to also extend our relaxed parking rules. During this emergency period, the Department of Transportation is not enforcing street sweeping in residential areas. Though if you can move your car, we are still trying to do that street sweeping, so help us out. Rush hour parking restrictions, non-metered time limits in commercial zones. We're not ticketing and towing abandoned and oversized vehicles, vehicles with expired registration or with recently expired permit parking placards. If you want more information about what's being enforced and not, visit ladot.lacity.org.
Today, I'm here to warn you about an emerging scam. This one related to contact tracing. Thousands of people in California are now working as contact tracers to stop the spread of COVID-19. Legitimate contact tracers are working with the California Department of Public Health, and they call, text, or email people who might have been exposed to the virus. They're going to ask questions about symptoms, talk about infection risk, and discuss self-quarantining. They're connecting people to free confidential testing, regardless of income or immigration status. But they never ask for social security numbers, financial information, or about health insurance. And they never charge. Don't take the bait.
You know, we can bake pies. We have a community that we can call the Action, and we support the cause. So there was, it was an easy yes.
I think the world isn't going to change in one fell swoop. I think it's going to change with millions of very tiny actions. They all matter. Maybe not in isolation, but all together, it's very powerful.
Today, we're going to take some brave and bold steps forward to achieve racial justice and equity and parity here in Los Angeles. We want to meet this moment and not miss this moment, that racism is also a public health crisis in America, that we don't just say the words that we all feel about racial justice, but that we enact them by holding accountable your city government to do the work of justice every single day. This will now live on as the way Los Angeles does business and inspires other cities to do the same.
The year 2020 will have a significant chapter in yet-to-be-printed history books.
Good morning, Los Angeles. And what a pleasure it is to be with you at the beginning of a week, which I know for so many of us continues to be weeks of struggle, of hope, of coming together, and of course, of challenges. But here we are at the iconic Tom Bradley Terminal, named after our city's greatest mayor, where international flights come in and leave from our city, which is the number-one airport in the world of origination and destination. One in which we come together, we see friends, we go to new horizons, and one that has been especially hard-hit, we know, because of the pandemic. We are here today to mark the launch of what we are calling "The Terminal Wellness Pilot Program," which is a vital step to protect your safety, to help our economy move forward, and to make sure that everybody stays healthy during this pandemic. Before I speak a little bit more about the program, I want to introduce leaders that you'll hear from. We're not all standing together because of safe physical distancing, something we need to all continue to practice. But I want to thank our LAWA CEO-designate, who's been the acting CEO, Justin Urbachi, who you'll hear from first; the president of the Board of Airport Commissioners, Sean Burton, who's also here with his fellow commissioner, Gabriel Ashegian. They're both citizen volunteers who help oversee and run this airport with our staff; and Amit Rikhi, who is the president and CEO of the Carlyle Airport Group; as well as Nicholas May, who's the airport segment's leader at Schneider Electric. Together, we are investing an unprecedented amount... Together, we are investing an unprecedented amount. It's in a 1-2-3-5-3. It's 1-2-3-5-4. So that should be a 4.
Okay, so you'll give me this later?
Yeah, yeah. Like, I'll pull this, I'll yank this off for you.
Okay, because we're going to type exactly what's happening.
Yeah, yeah. It's in the grid. It's in the script. It's in the script.
Yeah, I think you're correct.
Okay, yeah. I believe we're back in open session.
Okay, so just go ahead and take up item 51.
Sure, so, Madam President.
Before we do that, I need to call the role, Madam Clerk.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, present.
Bonin.
Bonin, present.
Buscaino.
Present.
Sadio.
Sadio, present.
Harris Dawson.
Harris Dawson, here.
Corretz.
Present.
Krikorian.
Here.
Lee.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rue.
Present.
Wesson.
Wesson is here.
Fourteen members present in the court, Madam President.
Okay, we're going to move on to 51. Mr. O'Farrell, did you have a question? Your virtual hand is up. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, go ahead and read.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Item 51.
Thank you, Madam President. For item 51, the construction contract disputes with Skanska, Stacy, and Wilbeck, SSW, concerning the Sixth Street Viadek replacement project. There's a motion moved by Mr. Sadio and seconded by Mr. Corretz to do the following. I'll read it out. One, authorize the city engineer to sign and execute the global agreement between the City of Los Angeles and SSW for the Sixth Street project. Two, authorize an increase of $100 million in the Sixth Street project budget for a new total of $587,627,272. Three, appropriate $58 million of the total $100 million in fiscal year 2020-21. Four, approve an extension of the contract with SSW, contract number C-123545, to December 31, 2022, with revised ceiling of $365 million. And four, authorize the city attorney or designate to make necessary technical adjustments, subject to the approval of the city administrative officer, and authorize the controller to implement the instructions. That's it. So we can vote on that.
Mr. Sadio? Okay, let's go ahead and prepare to vote on this item.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, aye.
Sadio. Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Councilmember Sadio.
Yes, Sadio, aye.
Corretz.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Fourteen ayes, the motion passes.
Okay, members, we're going to move on to special one, Rule 23. Mr. City Attorney, can you please read the findings?
Yes, I'll read the entire thing, Madam President. This is a motion presented by you and seconded by Mr. Buscaino. It reads as follows. This morning and after the posting of the agenda for today's city council meeting, the Department of Justice United States Attorney's, excuse me, United States Attorney's Office, charged Councilman Jose Rizar with felony crimes related to public corruption. Charter Section 211, Suspension Pending Trial, provides that pending trial, the council may suspend any elected officer against whom felony criminal proceedings have been initiated. It is unacceptable for any council member charged with public corruption to continue to be able to exercise the powers of his or her office. I therefore move that the council determine, as provided in Government Code Section 54954.2B2 and pursuant to Council Rule 23, that there's a need to take immediate action on this matter, and the need for action came to the attention of the city subsequent to the posting of the agenda for today's city council meeting. I therefore move that pursuant to Council Section 211, the council immediately suspend Jose Rizar from the office of council member of the 14th District of the Los Angeles City Council.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Let's go ahead and vote on the findings. Madam Clerk, please open the roll.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, aye.
Sadio. Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Sadio. Mr. Sadio.
I'm sorry, Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretz.
Yes.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, the findings are adopted.
Okay, members, we're going to take public comment on this item. Let's take the first caller. Okay, let's give about two or three minutes. There's no callers on the queue at this moment. Madam Clerk, why don't you go ahead and read the call-in number one more time?
Yes, Madam President. As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466, and then press the pound sign. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID number. Once submitted into the meeting, press *9 to request to speak. Let me repeat. and use meeting ID number 1605358466, and then press the pound key. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once submitted into the meeting, press *9 to request to speak.
Thank you. I'd remind any members of the public, this is an opportunity to speak on this special motion only, nothing else on the agenda nor public comment, or general public comment, I should say. So, we have no one, no callers, apparently.
We have no callers on this item, so let's go ahead and close public comments. Members, I call for the question on special one. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Harris Dawson, yes.
Corretz.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Fourteen ayes, the special motion passes.
Madam Clerk, we're going to move on to verbal motions. I believe you have seven to be introduced. Why don't we go ahead and start with you?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. A special, excuse me, a verbal motion, a Rule 16 motion, has been introduced by Councilmember Sadio to instruct the CAO to identify funding that could be used to secure and protect Radio Hill from unintentional or intentional damage. A seconder is needed for this?
I'll second.
Second, my Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next?
A second Rule 16 motion has been introduced by Councilmember Sadio. This is to reactivate a council file number 17-0538 to request recommendations from the Department of Transportation to prohibit the blockage of two-way vehicular traffic on public streets in the vicinity of active hillside construction sites. A seconder is needed for this?
Second.
Second, my Mr. Corretz.
Thank you.
Next?
A Rule 16 motion has been introduced by Councilmember Rodriguez. This is an offer of reward for information leading to identification, apprehension, and conviction of the person responsible for the shooting death of Devon Pledger on May 9, 2020.
I'll second that.
Second.
Thank you. Seconded by Council President Martinez.
Next?
A commendatory resolution has been introduced by Councilmember Krikorian. This is to resolve that Claire Batels is leaving city service after serving the people of L.A. for 34 stellar years with dedication, professionalism, unending positivity, and a genuine love for the city. This is seconded by?
Can we get a second? By Mr. Corretz.
Thank you. Next verbal motion is by Councilmember Sadio. This item is referred to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee, and it is an instruction to the Department of City Planning in consultation with the city attorney to prepare and present an ordinance to establish a hillside construction regulation supplemental use district to correspond to the geographical boundaries of the Mount Washington Glasso Park-specific plan. Is there a seconder to this motion?
Second.
Second, my Mr. O'Farrell.
Next is a verbal resolution that's referred to the Rules Elections and Intergovernmental Relations Committee. It's introduced by Councilmember Corretz. And this resolution is to include in the city's 2019-2020 federal legislative program support for legislation to adopt and implement the Transportation Electrification Partnerships Economic Stimulus Plan. Is there a seconder to this motion?
Second, my Mr. O'Farrell.
The final verbal motion is by Mr. Corretz, and this motion is referred to ad hoc police, and it is an instruction to the Police Department to report to the city council on the history and effectiveness of its policy regarding falsification of police reports, including an accounting of how often has been violated and what the outcomes of such incidents have been. Is there a seconder to this motion?
Second.
Second, my Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you.
Madam President, those are the motions for posting referral. They will be online in the city's website shortly after the end of this meeting. The desk is clear.
Members, do you have any verbal motions to introduce? Seeing none? Okay, what's before us, Madam Clerk?
The desk is clear, Madam President.
Okay, members, are there any announcements? Any adjournment motions?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Sadio.
Yes, I'd ask that we close in the memory of Stephen Bean. Stephen Bean was a philanthropist, a businessman, a filmmaker. Most will remember Polar Express, very active in the Democratic Party. I got to know him through mutual friends, and he was an extremely generous man, very kind, very decent man. He passed away yesterday. He's well-known for his philanthropy and his work in the movie industry. But I knew him personally at dinner with him a few times, and just found him to be an extremely generous and kind man, a great loss to our community to lose such a young, brilliant, thoughtful, and generous man as Stephen Bean.
Madam President, if I can add to that, thank you, Mr. Sadio. I too, over the course of these last several years, and as a council member, had an opportunity to connect with Steve Bean. He was an advocate for providing solutions to homelessness, specifically those youth who were homeless. He was instrumental in putting together a supportive housing project in Hollywood. I believe it was Step Up on Vine, if I recall correctly. And every time, a few times, I ran into Steve Bean. He knew I represented Watts, and he wanted to bring back Watts, the Watt Stacks. It was the concert that was arranged after the first civil unrest in Watts. Really active and engaged philanthropist. He will truly be missed. And our thoughts and prayers go out to his family and his son, and a true loss for our city.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I would love to be added to this adjournment motion. I just wanted to point out the role that Steve Bean played as a philanthropist, but also someone who understood the centrality of the City of Los Angeles as the creative capital of the world, and really worked, as Mr. Buscaino just alluded to, really worked to make sure all parts of the city got recognized in that regard, and the creativity that came out of the city, whether it was the Watt Stacks concerts from the 1970s to cutting-edge fashion design in other parts of the city, and in neighborhoods that, you know, aren't in the hotel guidebooks for where you visit, that don't necessarily make TMZ. He was both an investor and one who recognized their gift to not just Los Angeles, but to the world. May he rest.
Right on.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Krikorian? Mr. Krikorian, you're on mute.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'd like to ask that we adjourn this meeting of the city council in memory of Art Howard, who passed away on June 4th at the age of 86. Art was a real icon in the Studio City community. He devoted much of his life to maintaining and enhancing quality of life there. Since the early 1990s, Art played a pivotal role in most of the critical issues that were argued about and debated about in Studio City. He worked on the Ventura Coenga corridor-specific plan, which really has shaped development in Studio City and surrounding areas. He was the head of the Land Use Committee of the Studio City Residents Association, and spent many years grappling with some of the most challenging issues of development in this community. For 10 years, Art was on the Community Police Advisory Board, and he was often commended by his community. by local police and others for his tireless efforts to improve the quality of life, make people safer, remove illegal signage and graffiti and other things that blighted the neighborhood. Excuse me. Art was also the driving force in the effort to build a pedestrian bridge across the L.A. River in Studio City. The previous bridge, there was an original walking bridge, which was just a CBS Studios prop, which was removed in 1997. And Art realized that without that bridge, there would be no connection between the neighborhoods and the local business community. And so, realizing its significance, he convinced the City of Los Angeles to build a new one, which is a very important part of the community to this day. Art continued to work on behalf of the city right up until the very end of his long and rich life of 86 years. He is survived by his wife Charlene, his sons Matthew and Jeffrey, and his grandchildren Amanda, Charles, and Gillian. He left a great mark on the Studio City community, and all of us will miss Art Howard very much. May he rest in peace.
Any other adjourned motions, members? Okay, see, now our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
That we are really treating all of our communities adequately. And so that's something that we want to make sure that we include.
Okay, just to clarify, because I think this is fascinating. There's definitely a different temperament and tone to people who are, you know, getting to the age in which they're looking for their own place to live. And a lot of these seem to want to live in an urban area so they don't have to have a large community, et cetera. So would zoning questions change, or zoning issues change something from an industrial space to a housing space so that people could live where they work?
Right, and that's a great question. So if you think about 1946, we were very different in terms of how we produce things. You know, our manufacturing is very different than it today than it was then. Back then, it was much more polluting, it was noisier, it was creating pollution. You can actually do manufacturing so much more clean, cleaner, and easier today. So the need for separating from some of these uses is no longer needed anymore, just from a technological standpoint. And there is a greater need for housing than we had in the past. So what this new zoning is going to do is it's also going to allow, give us opportunities that we can actually hopefully combine them and put people closer together, and really do it in a way that's thoughtful and systematic. You know, we've started to see that in downtown L.A., in the Arts District. If anyone's been in the Arts District any time in the last few years, you will have seen these areas that had been industrial for over 100 years getting turned into residential. And some of the buildings are still being used for industrial right next door.
Is that a problem?
Well, no, because what we do is we have to actually study them and make sure that we're actually not creating, that the health is fine. But we're able to build things and manufacture things so much more differently so we can kind of create more safe separation than we were in 1948.
Interesting. Okay, so you mentioned the fact that we're going through a very tumultuous time.
Right.
And one of the things that unfortunately has happened is that there are businesses that have suffered damage through looting, et cetera.
Right.
And Mayor Garcetti mentioned that the City Planning Department would streamline any kind of needs and permits that people might have at this particular time. Is that something that is easy to explain?
Yeah. It's a very complex process, as you can imagine, going through the bureaucracy in Los Angeles. But yeah, so first off, you know, we had to, within a few days, you know, several months ago, move from operating in all of our city offices to everyone, almost everyone, operating remotely.
Right.
So everyone in America had to do that, basically. And so we did too. And so we had to really re-engineer our whole systems fairly quickly, in a matter of days, to make sure that all of our employees could work together remotely, and then serve the public remotely. And so we've done that by really moving more of our services online than we had in the past, and we had to be fairly nimble when it came to that. And that's, I think, one of the keys right now, is COVID-19 is really forcing government to be way more nimble than it has been in the past, because we just have to. It's an opportunity, though, too, because in the past, our customers weren't always being very nimble either.
Right.
We're in a situation where everyone in America has to be nimble. And so it's really given us an opportunity to really operate differently. And we're also doing things that are tangible that you'll be seeing as you walk or drive down the street. We have the city and the mayor enacted the L.A. Alfresco program, which what that does is it makes it easier for businesses to, as they, excuse me, restaurants, as they reopen through COVID-19. What it allows them to do, because of the new rules, they have to create more physical separation within their restaurants, which means a lot fewer customers can dine indoors. We've done a streamlined program where restaurants can actually dine outdoors in places that previously weren't allowed. So you can turn a parking lot, perhaps a sidewalk, and maybe even part of a parking space that may be on the street, into outdoor dining. And you've started to see some of this, where you've seen some restaurants put in the green, you know, turf to make it feel like more of an outdoor garden space, which otherwise would be a parking lot.
So are those going to be temporary permits until we're past what is considered the crisis period? Or are these things going to stick?
Yeah, the idea is to keep this through the COVID-19 crisis when they're not allowed to, when they're not allowed to use all their dining space. And then with the idea that they'll be going back to...